All meeting in order here. Lisa, if we could have roll call, please.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman? Holly, this is roll call. Holly? We'll continue. Mr. DeBoer?
Here.
Mrs. Hargenrader?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Dr. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Silvas?
Here.
She said she can hear us. Holly?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. We're doing roll call. Are you here? Say yes. Holly?
In here.
Okay, thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have noticed that we had an executive session at the last committee meeting for Personnel and School Safety Security Board Report from 7:20 to 8:00 p.m. And I have one signed up, one member of the public signed up, Lisbeth Searle White to speak.
Good evening. I'm Lisbeth Searle White, a longtime resident of Meadville. Both my kids went through Crawford Central, graduated. They're young adults now. And I'm also a member of the NAACP Education Committee and worked, have worked very hard over the last number of years on our district's comprehensive. So basically, I am alarmed at the resignation of Jan Filepa. I think every taxpayer and parent in the district should also be alarmed and should start showing up for these meetings. I have questions for the board. Why is this board pushing for a tax increase and doubling the per capita tax? And I know that has since changed since I wrote this, but until this morning, that was, that was the proposal. And that's particularly of concern because why is this board also ignoring the recommendations of the 2023 feasibility study? It shows that our schools, we have vastly more building space than we have students to fill the schools, and that's just projected to decrease into the future. I'm really alarmed at the challenging of our federally guaranteed protections under Title IX. Why are we turning a blind eye? Why are you turning a blind eye to significant discrepancies in teacher-student ratios and in class size around the district? Those numbers are significant. And why are you resistant to diverse representation in our curriculum? We've been fighting for this for years. Very, very concerned to learn about the timbering proposal at our elementary schools. I think it's a short-term money fix and a huge, just a huge sacrifice in long-term value. So there are a lot of reasons to be concerned, and I'm just really encouraging citizens in the district to get engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: the regular board meeting of May 20, 2024, and the committee of whole meeting of June 17, 2024, and I would need a motion.
Still moved?
And Ronnie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports. Curriculum. Mrs. Silvas?
Approval of the contract for Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Special Education Programs and Services for the 2024-2025 school year. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the contract for Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Special Education Programs and Services for the 2024-25 school year. The attachment three, I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I just want to point out that, you know, my opinion is that Pencrest already tried this program and realized in-house is better. So that would be the point I'd like to make as far as why I'm going to say no to it.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Two nays, correct.
Well, nay is, it is.
Yeah, I don't know.
It sounds like a nay.
Should we do a roll?
The timing, with Holly being a lag, I would suggest you add your own.
I slowed down a little bit.
Or ayes and nays instead of.
Okay. We're going to do it over again. Can you focus on the phone here?
Holly and Kevin, we're going to redo the vote on the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Special Contract. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yeah.
Mr. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hargenrader?
No.
Mr. Irwin?
No.
Dr. Pickering?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Silvas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six to two.
Correct.
Moving on to extracurricular. That would be Holly. We want somebody else. Shall I go ahead and read that since I'm going to read the rest of the agenda?
Okay.
Resolve that the Board of School Directors.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Holly, do you want to go ahead and read that agenda item?
No, go, no, go ahead. You probably can't hear me.
Okay.
Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the cooperative sponsorship of a sport with the Crawford Christian Academy for football, and I would need a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. I think that was everybody. Motion carries. Food Service, Mrs. Hargenrader.
Do you get resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the seamless summer option food program?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Ryan with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I think that was everybody. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Irwin.
Approval of the request for proposal for forestry management. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves a request for proposals for forestry management for Neeson Hill Elementary, Westend Elementary, and Cochrane Elementary Schools, and I so move.
Second.
Ed, thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to point out, as whenever I propose this, that I suggested that the money goes into an investment so that it does take and give return, not a one-time tax incentive or money incentive, that it is something that will take and continue to pay out.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I believe that's everyone. Opposed? Nay? Nay, one?
Well, can I abstain? I don't, I don't know enough. Abstain?
Motion carries.
Approval of boiler repairs. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the boiler repairs at Cochrane Junior/Senior High School and the Meadville Area Senior High Middle School Complex, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is that everybody? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now my turn. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: the treasurer's report for May, financial statements, and the payment of bills, and I will need a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
Monica and Ron. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're onto the budget. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the adoption of the 2024-25 general fund budget in the amount of $70,611,883 as presented on the PDE 2028. A copy of PDE 2028 will be made a part of the minutes. Attachment seven, and I need a motion.
Still moved?
I'm sorry, do we want to make that?
Ryan? Need a second? A second?
Kevin or Holly, do you want to second the motion on the budget?
I will second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to point out, you know, we keep talking about raising taxes, and as I pointed out before, I don't think we're continuing to do this as far as raising taxes. If you think about it, with people are not able to put food on their table, and now you're asking them to take and spend more money on taxes, that means they're also not doing the preventive maintenance they need to on their homes. So their, the value of their home is actually decreasing as you're asking for more money from that asset. So I, I just don't think that we can ask the taxpayers for more money when we have a lot of work we can do here to, to cut and trim and tighten our belts a little bit.
I would say what work are we going to be doing? Because we've tried to talk about school closures, we've tried to talk about cutting costs, and people aren't in favor of doing those things. So if we can't have it both ways, right? We can't have all of the things and then keep, you know, funding all of those things. So a lot of, we were told that a lot of this has to do with healthcare increases, healthcare cost increases. We don't have any control over healthcare cost increases. So if we're going to see it was a 17% raise in healthcare costs, we have to cover those. And, and so where are we going to cut, right? Where are we going to lose those things? And, and I would, I would have loved to have started having that conversation before today.
I agree. We should have definitely had that conversation. I think one of the things I look at is how long has East End been vacated and still sitting there and we're still paying maintenance on it? You know, we put some people in there just to kind of say it's being utilized, but I, I think that there is that, as we discussed at the last meeting, walking through the buildings, realizing they're not on night setback when they should be. You know, well, how much can we save on electricity by making sure that our HVAC C systems are working properly? I, I think we can cut out any unnecessary training. If it's not required for the teacher's advancement, you know, we can do stuff like that. But I, I think, you know, we need to have some serious discussions as far as, and even in direction that we're going, are we going to close a school? As was mentioned, the feasibility study saved declining enrollment. You know, is it going to be that we are going to have to close a school? And why are we not having that discussion? So I agree with you, Ron. We, we need to have these discussions, and, and we seem to keep kicking the can down the road and using, raising taxes as the answer instead of having a serious discussion.
But are we going to do that without a budget? Or are we going to do that with a budget for next year?
I, I think we can do some more trimming on this budget, and we could use, you know, some of the reserves to cover the budget so we have a no tax increase. And then that way, we get serious about showing the board is really interested in solving problems instead of kicking the can down the road. That's, that's my opinion.
I just, I'd, I'd like to say that, um. Kevin?
Go ahead. You were going to talk.
Yeah. I did ask Austin to, to look up some numbers as far as our past tax increases, and we've, we've, over the last 12 years, taxes have gone up 16.6% over the last 12 years. At the same time, the rate of inflation over those 12 years, 25 and a half, basically, percent. I mean, we've, we've held the line pretty well on taxes here. There's, there's a couple of years, there's, there's two years with zero increases, there's, there's a year where we decreased them in the last 12 years. Last couple of years, there have been some significant increases. But there's also been some very significant inflation. It's hit everybody, and the school district is not exempt from being hit by inflation. Yes, we've got a feasibility study. No, there are no recommendations in the feasibility study. Said before, I think it's the wrong name for it. I think it was a building audit. It, it told us what state of repair our buildings were in. It did not give us a recommendation of what we should do. That is for the administration to do, and the administration's working on that and, and developing a plan. And then they will bring that to us. In the meantime, you know, and, and we've been told, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can't just close a building. Maybe East End you can, and the biomass or, but, but a school, an operating school takes a year, I believe. So this is not going to happen overnight. I mean, every, you know, the people that have come in and commented, why aren't we closing a building? You can't just shut it down. It takes time. And we also don't want to just shut them down. We want to have a plan. And in the meantime, we have to have a budget. So I, I didn't get on this board to raise taxes, and I fought to keep taxes low over the course of the 12 year, or the, not 12 years yet, eight, one on 10 years that I've been on here. But Mr. Washington told us every year, you would be much better off to give a small increase each year, and, or you're going to end up with large increases. And, and we're there, you know? I, I heard him. I listened to him. I didn't necessarily vote that way, but we're here. And, and it's not, and, and maybe we wouldn't be here without the inflation that we faced the last four years. But we are. And, you know, we have, you know, like I've said before, if we were based on income taxes, maybe we wouldn't need to raise taxes. But we're, we're based on real estate taxes, and that valuation doesn't change each year like income does. So if we need more revenue, and we do every year, we probably should have been raising a little bit every year. So, but, but now, but now we're, we're here where, where we've got a double whammy. We're getting to the end of the deal here where, where we're starting to, the fund balance has gone down, and we've been hit by some pretty significant inflation over the last few years. And, and it's a, it's a, it's a fact.
And in regard to real estate taxes, you know, I want to get back to the per capita tax thing. Those are already being collected, and even an increase to $10 per person takes a lot of the, that, that affects everybody and puts everybody's skin in the game. You know, it's not just all the, the funding then resting on, on homeowners and, and those who own property in the area. I mean, personally, I'd be all for just abolishing the real estate tax altogether just because it's like paying rent on your own property. But it is definitely a burden on people trying to maintain their property and, and, you know, I just think it, I'd be more apt to consider the budget if that was at least something that we had the ball rolling on, moving toward that, or at least considering it a little more in depth, whatever steps we'd have to take.
I would just respond that renters pay taxes through their rent, right? That they cover part of those homeowner taxes even if they don't own a home.
Look, I'm glad you brought up the per capita. I mean, that gets the 18-year-olds all the way up. And, you know, where an 18-year-old may still be living at home, and so they're, you know, yes, their parents are paying the taxes, but, you know, we're able to collect it, and I agree. I, I kind of thought whenever we found out that, okay, this had to be advertised or anything, that we was going to at least approve that process to get started, not just throw in the towel and say, oh, I guess it's going to take too long, we're not going to do it. So I, I agree with you, Ed, that I'd be more in favor if we knew that next year that that was going to be reinstated.
Yeah. Well, the, the board decides whether it's going to be reinstated, but the process needs to start in November?
No later than.
No later than November.
No later than November. So as we said, you want to go with that.
And the board appears to be interested in it, and I believe Austin's starting the process. I mean, or.
Yeah, it's, it's, it takes more time than, I think it was.
Thirty days.
It was brought up seven days ago, and immediately following that, questions were answered that I had. And the process kind of looks like a 30-day. We have to run a few ads in the paper, we have to give taxpayers a chance to basically contest the tax.
Don't we have to approve that tonight to start the process?
We don't have to, no. We wouldn't levy the tax until, until July 1 of next year. Sorry.
We cannot put it into taxes this year.
Right, we know that can't be in taxes this year.
Can't be in this year, and, yeah, it has to be approved by a referendum vote. So, yeah, I mean, it has to be voted on by the taxpayers.
And then you have to give 45-day notice on top of that to other, 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 you know, like the county, they, they levy a per capita tax. We have to give them a 45-day notice that's saying, basically, we are levying it too. It's a process. There's a process set up in the statutes that we, we have to follow.
I would say that if you have to do a referendum, you can kiss the per capita tax goodbye. It's not coming back. That should have been explained to this board when Guy O'Neil decided to, him and Tom decided to eliminate the per capita tax because it was a nuisance tax, and, you know, we don't need revenue. We gave up $64,000, and yes, Austin and I disagree with the 55% collection rate, and I'm still getting info to validate that it's only 55% collected. Otherwise, it's a county, and then we'd not be collecting it. So I would say that at this point, I'm probably going to vote no on this budget, and I would like to see us move to a lower tax increase, or no tax increase, and move some of the funds around that we are tucking on, I'm going to call it the left side of the budget, so that it lowers our fund balance and put the money back where it should be on the fund balance side, the unrestricted, and take a little bit more of the unrestricted, or the restricted, I mean, take a little bit more of that to balance the budget. And going forth, we as a board seriously look at the expenses and so we can curtail. And yes, I did hear the lady speak about the feasibility, and we have some major decisions coming within this next year, what we have to do to curtail this spending. And if that means consolidating, closing schools, it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take a process, and I think with some community involvement, as Dr. Gellin had mentioned at the committee meeting, I think we will get there, and it will be a reasonable solution to our muddy crunch, and go forward.
Go forward.
I'm going to need, I'm going to need some very clear directive on the budget. We have to pass a budget by June 30th. So in, in passing a budget.
Friday.
Correct.
Passing a budget doesn't mean putting it on the agenda. There's a multitude of steps before that. One change to one number in a budget of 10,000 different lines of accounting creates issues. It takes time to get that to rebalance itself. So whatever you guys want, I will obviously do, but I'm going to need some very clear directive on it.
I think what Kevin just said is take some of the unassigned and, and move it, you know, so then we get a, a no tax increase budget now, and then we have our discussions long before we get into the, the last hour is what we need to do.
We, I, I will say this, too. We are using 20% to 25% of our fund balance to balance the budget this year. So of, of all of our operating cash, we're using 20% of that to balance the budget.
And going forward.
Already with, with the tax increase.
And if we go forward with things, we sell the timber, you know, sell East End, and then, you know, talk about the per capita tax. I mean, there, there's some, some coming back in for next year, you know, is what we have. So, so if we deplete this year, next year, you know, we already have a few irons in the fire, you know, to fix things for next year. And if, if part of that ends up being closing a school down, which one to two years, you know, we, we have that money potentially coming back in on that reserve side. So.
And I would, I would just, so you're talking about investing the money that you're going to put in, get from this timber, which is going to be tens of thousands of dollars. But think about all of the money we're going to lose by spending all of what's left in our fund balance.
We do, the money that we, that we do have in the fund balance usually earns anywhere from five to five and a half percent every single month. If you look at the, it's, it's revenue code 6500 on the, on the revenue sheet. We usually get anywhere from $60,000 on the general fund to on the pligot side, a lot more usually. It's usually over 100 or close to 100,000 in interest because our, I wager our rate's so high, but.
Per year?
Per month.
Per month.
Yes. So we, you know, we can get close to paying somebody's salary every month with just, just our operating cash.
If we, you said we're using 20% of the fund balance right now to balance the budget. If we go to a zero increase, what percent will, will we have to use?
We'll be using roughly 4 million. I think it'll be a little bit under, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but it'll be under, a little bit under 4 million. Right now, our fund balance is about 15 million. And at 15 million with a district this size, we're at about 8% of our budget is operating cash or, or fund balance. And we are right on par as an average throughout the entire state. I mean, we're within a few percentage points of that. So a $4 million hit to that puts us well under that threshold. Just, you know, I know I brought that up once before at one of the budget meetings, but it's important to know.
I guess who would be in favor of if we say no to this, having a, a special meeting later in the month here in order to take and.
We don't, we don't.
We have to pass the budget by June 30th, which literally that's this coming Sunday, so we have to have a meeting between tonight and Friday.
Or take and negotiate tonight as to what you're taking out.
I think the first, one of the first things we need to do is we have a motion, and we have a, a second. So we need to vote on the resolution at hand, and then we can further the discussion from there.
So discussion, anyone? Before we vote on this, by roll, roll call vote? Please, Lisa?
Mr. Merritt?
No.
Mrs., Mrs. Chapman?
No.
Mr. DeBoer?
No.
Mrs. Hargenrader?
No.
No.
Mr. Irwin?
No.
Dr. Pickering?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Silvas?
No.
Motion fails.
Roughly forty-two million of that budget, that seventy million is salary and benefits. We've cut the pencils, we've cut the erasers and the paper clips, so...
So, I think what needs to happen from here is that we need to pass a budget either tonight or in a special meeting before Friday, and at this point, you know, we can't just say like, oh, have Austin run some numbers. I think some people need to make some specific motions based on, based off of, I guess, the July, sorry, not July, June tenth. When did we put out the proposed final budget? The one that was in...
Yeah, it was early June.
Well, whatever the proposed final budget was going into last week and going into, I guess that's what came back for tonight, yes.
On change.
So, we need some, some specific motions on how to change that proposed final budget that was presented tonight that didn't pass.
Austin, what's the, what's the number in the resolution? What does that need to be to pass a zero percent increase?
To not take anything extra from the fund balance?
No, to, so we don't have a tax increase. What does this seventy million, six hundred and eleven, eighty, what does that number need to be?
Sixty-nine point eight, sixty-nine point seven five, somewhere in there, million. The additional revenue from the tax increase issue was about eight hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Can you just restate how much per resident that is?
So, if you, per resident across the district, it's about seventy-one dollars, a little bit underneath seventy-one dollars.
They bought a thirty-thousand-dollar home?
On a thirty-thousand-dollar sef-...
Yes.
The increase in the Act One Homestead was about sixty-two dollars, I believe, it's somewhere in there. It's like, if you get homestead, and you obviously got the tax increase, your net increase would be about nine dollars. Right now, there's about sixty-two hundred people that receive the homestead. There's roughly fifteen thousand maybe parcels, so the rate on the Act One Homestead is quite low as well.
So, I guess I would question right off of that, is nonessential training, you know, how much is there, is looking for the training and such? Because of course, sometimes if there's schools and you got to cover it with a substitute and everything else, so, you know, it could be substantial amount of money, depends on how many nonessential trainings, you know, are being attended.
District-wide, for every, every substitute that we pay for on the teacher's side, cost is roughly five hundred thousand a year. That's every absence in every building, every scenario, about five hundred thousand, so...
Trainings that are on the board agenda are paid for out of federal programs, not out of the general fund budget?
Most, most, most professional development that we do is grant funded.
Almost all of it is out of Title II A or Title I or Title IV?
Just to translate, that means that those funds are not available for other areas of the budget, correct?
Right.
Correct.
If we don't spend them, then we don't get them.
Sometimes you have to...
It's a zero.
Right. So, Title II A is purely professional development. And Title IV, there's a certain percentage you have to spend on it as well, and Title I?
In some cases, if we were to cut out those professional developments that are grant funded, or if we were to not spend money to grant, in some cases, you would have to pay that money back in the form of a check.
Okay, so, on this, and I'm looking at the, under the personal services salaries, I don't know exactly, again, without having a glossary of all terms, you know, exactly what anything is, but, you know, there's two million there, and a personal service employee benefits is another million and a half almost. So, you know, I mean, again, it's hard for us to evaluate the budget if we don't know exactly what all these things are, you know, because then we go down to support services, which makes sense, you know, then we've got salaries there, and you keep going down, and you know, there's salary, salary, salaries, but, you know, again, we're not sure exactly how many of those are required, and how many are, you know, kind of, just like you said, the personal development, somebody goes off to that, and so now we're having to put a substitute in for it, and you said five hundred thousand is the number for that total. So, that's why I said, well, I've seen all these different places we've paid salaries out, and you're saying that forty-two million of it is payroll. So, you know, I mean, without us having a clear view of all the people that we're paying, it's kind of hard for us to say, oh, maybe we cut here, maybe we cut there, so...
But those are negotiated with the teaching, teachers' union, so we can't start talking about cutting salaries and benefits right now, a week before the budget is due.
I'm not saying talk about cutting salary, I'm questioning whether we need all the people that are listed here, you know, I mean, there's so much money that's in here without description of exactly where it's going. That's the problem I have.
So, I will, I will tell you this, the PDE 2028 is mandated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education for business managers like myself to use. If we have no choice but to use it, we actually have to write a certification to the state that guarantees the state that we are using their account codes, we're using their software, that we are using that exact form that you're looking at to fill out the budget. Now, we do spend roughly twenty-four million just in salary. That forty-two million, a section of, twenty-four million of that forty-two million is one hundred percent just salary. A large portion of that, which is roughly eleven cents on every dollar that we spend, goes towards healthcare for employees.
Well, then I look at the one here, other use of funds, four million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Other use of funds, that's the description literally on this.
The PDE gives, yes. Is that the five thousand revenue, or expense code, start with five?
It is nine hundred. Under debt service, other expenditures and finance.
So, that would be debt service and other expenditures that don't fall in instruction, support, extracurricular, that's where our debt service gets paid out of.
Just other use of funds.
Debt service and other use of funds, yes. Other use of funds would be something like, I don't know, if we purchased a building, it would come out of the five thousand expenditure codes.
And I realize other objects is only a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, but, see, those things like that, and then under budgetary resources, other objects is another hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, other objects and other uses of funds just does not make me warm and cozy about...
You would have to levy at the state level to change that.
Well, I'm just looking for a better description, that's why I mentioned before too.
So, that one hundred thousand is actually budgetary reserve. Historically, this district has budgeted about half a million in budgetary reserve. That's for, you know, if Dr. Gallen decides to add a teacher unexpectedly, or something, a boiler goes to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars or something. That's where that money is placed there for. It's kind of, it's very versatile money. Now, I will say, we typically budget about half a million. That was unfortunately one of the things we had to cut down to just a hundred thousand.
And that's what Kevin and I both have mentioned, you know, getting away from this unassigned and into assigned, you know, I mean, we know we're going to need boiler repair, maintenance, whatever, we know we're going to need to do roofs, and so we need to put those into assigned funds so they cannot, so they're not liquid and can be moved around, you know, as you please. And I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm just saying, you know, as a business owner, I know that we allot money for certain things. We know that things are going to come up, and so we taking a lot of money for that in the future. And, you know, so, just to see a slush fund in the millions of dollars doesn't sit well.
Yeah, well, I will tell you that to move some of this money into those assigned funds you're talking about, it takes board action, okay? And once that money's in that fund...
It can't be moved.
It can't be moved. In some cases, if you put it into the Capital Reserve Fund, Fund Thirty-two, it has to be spent on that specific project.
Yeah.
So, the reason why you don't typically lock that money into a fund unless you have a unanimous vote on a project, or you have one hundred percent certainty that that project is going down, is because minds do change. I mean, we have a new board as of January, and a lot has changed. If we would have, if the board in November would have locked in funds, you would, you know, it would have taken another board action to move that money.
Right, but I mean, we all know roofs need replaced, we all know HVAC equipment needs replaced, maintained, serviced.
Which can still be spent out of those funds that you...
Right, but, you know, to lock them in so it's not a slush fund is what we're looking at, you know, where it does take a board action to do the spending. So, the board is actually more in control of the spending. That's what, you know, I think is the...
At the same time, you're asking that we just take this, I, I don't like that label, slush fund, it's a, it's a fund, I mean, it's a, and it, right now, you're sitting here saying that you want to use it instead of raising taxes and just spread it over the budget, whereas if it was all locked into something as you are saying you wish, that couldn't be done.
Right, right.
You're exactly right in saying that.
So, you know, that's why I said, we need to set, you know, like Matt is saying about the boiler repairs and, you know, questioning whether we have money, if we had those funds and everything was locked in and set aside, we would have a more realistic picture as to what is really the budget number. And, you know, so, right now, we can't say that we need any of the money that's sitting in the reserves.
Well, it's operating cash. There's times throughout the year where our, the money, the, even just the money that we're using to balance the budget, the four million, there's times throughout the year where our bank account, our general fund dips below four million dollars. Okay? Which means we have to now pull money out of our higher earning interest and now use it to spend, which then the next month, our interest comes down, and so on and so forth, and then you keep doing that over and over. And now you lose a revenue stream of four hundred thousand dollars a year that we earn in interest, conservatively, with interest rates going up.
I just, I want to counter that with my trust of you, and, you know, we have, we hire people to do this. I'm not a financial expert, and I would deign to say that no one on this board is as much of an expert as the people that we pay to do that work. And so, I am unsure of why we would care about what things are called in the budget. If we want to call it discretionary maintenance funding, that doesn't change the problem we have right now, which is that we have to pass a budget in a week, and there doesn't seem to be any movement about why are that, what that's going to be, besides you just don't want to raise taxes. And so, if we could maybe shift the conversation to what we can do in the next six days, I would really like to get this done tonight. I don't want to meet this week to meet about boilers and to talk about what we're going to be spending money on. So, if somebody has an alternative, I would hope that if you were going to not pass a budget, you'd come with an alternative, then that would be great for us to be talking about.
Kevin, do you want to weigh in on this at all?
The only thing I said was to lower the fund balance and try to get to a zero, that was where I was. And, I mean, I've been listening to this whole conversation, and we can go everywhere we wanted to. I'd like to see it get wrapped up tonight. I'm not sure we're going to get it wrapped up tonight. I would, I would even consider a much smaller tax increase than the point four-two, if that's what it took to get it through. I know, I know where Austin's coming from, and I know where, I know where you're coming from, Ron, and I know where other people are coming from, that, I mean, it's tied down there. And, I mean, I would agree with Ryan, I mean, I'm not the expert on what to say what we do, but that's my suggestion, if you're looking for a suggestion. I know it puts our fund balance a little bit lower, and maybe we put some more pressure on us as a board to kind of figure out what we're going to be doing down the road, and move forward. I mean, selling East End, that's a one-time fix, selling, other than we lose the everyday costs that we have up there, that would be gone, that's ongoing, but it's still, it's a one-time hit to your budget. Selling timber could be a year and a half, two-year opt before you get to that money. Closing a new school, you're looking a good year out, closing a new school or merger, whatever we be looking at. So, we have got to all sharpen our pencils and get with Dr. Gallen and Austin and figure out what we really want to do, and right ahead of forward. I don't know, I know Austin's going to, we're under the gun. Friday's going to be here before you know it. Austin has to have all this stuff to the state before the thirtieth, I believe, so that we're in line with them. And I just thought of this out there, the state hasn't really passed their budget yet, and what do they got, about eight days, six days, something like that? Well, six days to get theirs passed, and hearing Austin talking about cash flow, that if the state doesn't pass their budget, we're not going to get our checks from the state on our subsubways and all that until they pass, so we can really get into a pickle. So, that's where I'm at.
Holly, do you have anything that you want to add? I don't want you guys to feel like we're ignoring you guys because you're on the phone, sorry.
No, I'm okay, I'm just listening to all the discussions. You know, I have had a couple of the community members reach out to me and ask that we try to see what we can do to reduce the tax increase. Concerns are mainly for senior citizens on a fixed income, and is there any way that we can review it? I don't personally want to raise taxes, but I also understand that, you know, the lights don't turn on for free, and there's a lot that goes into running the school and running the district, and the last thing I want to do is look at cutting, you know, jobs or anything like that. So, I'm just listening to the discussion right now and just, you know, seeing where we're headed. I'm okay with meeting again this week if it's at all possible, because I don't think we're going to come to a solution tonight.
But do you think we'll come to a solution anytime in the next six days? Like, that's my concern. If there's no...
We're actually talking about four days.
Four days, yeah. So, if there's no movement, where is the movement? Like, it's just a, are we going to pass a budget with no tax increase, then what is that? Or if we're going to pass a budget with half, a half of what we proposed, what is that number?
I'm going to put you on the spot, get your...
I agree with you, Ryan, I think, I agree with you, Ryan, I think we need to give some major direction, because leaving here tonight without a budget doesn't solve the problem yet, because we can come back tomorrow, we can come back Wednesday, we can come back Thursday, come back Friday, and still be in the same boat where we're at. What do we want as a final budget? Do we want a tax increase of any sort or a no tax increase? And I know back in May, I think the majority of the board members were talking, at that point, it was a four-four. point, it was a 4-4. I was told I was on the fence of a lower tax increase and we were looking at a quarter of a mill, .25. It came in a .42, .47. I mean, is there support for a .25 or is there support for a zero mill? Unfortunately, the per capita is out of the question. It's gone. I don't really see that one moving forward even into the next budget if the process is going to be a referendum. I mean, we were kind of hook, line and sinker on that one and we had it, we've lost it. That's gone. That's water over the dam, we're never going to get back. So fortunately, we move forward with the real estate. That's where the increases will come if we need to increase our expenditures other than what we get from the state. And, I mean, I'm willing to give some on a tax increase, but I think the .42 is just a little bit much. And if I do do a tax increase, it comes with some fiscal responsibility that we are just not going to be able, just doing whatever comes along the pike. I know later on in this meeting tonight, we're approving a person, kind of an administrator or whatever you want to call it for, charter school, cyber school, to try to pull back some of those kids that we're spending over $7 million on, that I think the community needs to know. It's 7 million for 229 students that is going out of our district that we as taxpayers are putting the bill for. And I would support, you know, that, yeah, put the person on, but we better be getting more than what it's costing us to put the person on back. And I'm not sure that's even going to happen, but it's a try. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I would go a, a smaller tax increase if that's, if we're five people who'd be in agreement of that. Maybe reducing the fund balance sum to help keep things where we're at and a small increase. I don't know.
I, I think I'm, I'd like to try to help move this forward. First, I'm going to give Austin an assignment. How much, if we go to a zero tax increase and take it out of the fund balance, how much of a hit will we take in interest that we could have earned versus where you're at now? Take your time, because I'm going to, I want to ask the folks here a question. I personally trust that the administration has pared this budget down as tight as they can get it. Ron's asked some questions about it, so I'm not going to say one way or another, you're going to answer for yourself whether you think they did or not. But I'd like to go around the room and ask if, do you want to cut the budget up? Are we just going to stay here all night and do that in the next three days? Do I need to call off work? Or is the budget, what they've come up with, do you think it's, I think it's pared down as tight as they can do it? Ed, do you think-
I'd still like to look at a .25 increase.
No, no, just is the, not the taxes, the budget. The number that Austin's come up with, where we're at, the money that he says we need, are you okay that that is the bottom dollar? Not where we're going to get it from, what he says we're going to spend.
70 million, 611,800.
That's, that's my question to everybody. Do you want to, do you want to tear into the budget? Or are you okay with it where he's at? Not the tax increase? Figure out how we're going to fund this budget after we decide that the budget's okay.
I'd still like to at least look at some of the, some of the figures. I mean, to, no more specifics. Monica.
I would feel that right now, as of this budget, it would be cut down as far as they would be able to. I can see that and I hear them speaking about that. I would like to make it a goal to look at this a little, in, more in-depth after we pass this budget. I understand this needs passed.
Well, with my previous experience of working at a school district, I know that there's the theory if you don't spend the money that's in your budget, you lose it. And so that the goal is to spend all your budget that you, you know, money that's budgeted. So I'm going to say that there's some fluff in here that, you know, could probably still be, if somebody was 100% honest and said, okay, this is the projects, this is what I estimated, we cut it down because I literally got called on the carpet for not spending all my budgeted money and was told that if we don't spend it, we're going to lose it. And so, you know, we brought, bought frivolous things just to use up budgeted money. You know, and that was at a previous employer, that was not Crawford Central, but, you know, so I do know that how budgets sometimes work whenever you're dealing with state money and federal money and such like that.
Can I ask you a question? What, what will it take for you, what do I need to provide to you in the board to, I don't want to use the word persuade, to show you that this budget's running on, it's running on fumes?
But, you know, and I, I know what you did is went out to the principals and the principals went out to the maintenance and stuff like that and everybody said, this is what I'd like to have, this is what I need to do to get that. And, you know, I don't know if anybody has evaluated, you know, the custodial supplies, you know, for the cost effectiveness of it or whatnot. So that's where I look at. Everybody's doing estimates and of course, they're going to estimate high and yes, with inflation, you know, it's probably a safe bet to estimate high. We do have an election coming up in November and if things go right, we could possibly see the inflation going the other way. So I know that's a crapshoot, but at the same time, you know, do we penalize people now for what may be offset come next year, you know, by inflation drop?
I will say, I've been, I've been hearing that the, the interest rates are coming down three years ago when I started the process of buying a house. And since I started looking three years ago to when I bought last year, my interest rate increased by three points. So it's, it's really tough to say that next year, things are going to start coming down because of an election, you know, which-
It's a crapshoot. That's why I said, you know.
We can nickel-die things.
The president doesn't set the, the interest rates or really dictate the market, you know, very much at all. It's the Federal Reserve.
I, I have to agree with Kevin. I mean, and what Ed said, I mean, if we could take, whether we use the fund balance to budget, to get the budget, if we could at least go in half of, you know-
Before we get to that, Ryan, you good with the budget number?
Yeah, I think this is great. I also think it's sad that we had to cut from our budget. Their teachers, you said, don't get rulers or whatever. I don't think that is, that is fluff. I don't think that is fluff. I think that is important for a district to run. And so I think that it's great that we've cut the, to get it to the number it is, but I liked it at what it was and I said yes to what it was. So, so I really appreciate the work that you've done and I'll keep saying that.
Tanner?
It is very difficult to say yes to raising money on all of the people in the district, but I do trust that he has done his job. He's done his due diligence. He has come back last week with cuts. And when I spoke to somebody in the district about the seven substitutes, she about fell over because she said, we don't have substitutes now. What will we do? I am, I am so torn, but I do trust that you've done your job. I do. At the same time, I also know people are hurting. I'm like riding the fence. I know. I, I, I wish that I could take and balance it so that we could stay where we are. I will support whatever the board supports.
You guys are breaking up very badly and I'm having a hard time hearing what they're proposing.
Holly, Holly, I think what they're proposing in a way, they're kind of just going around round tables, so to speak.
I'm asking whether we think we've got a bottom line budget as low as we can get it.
Did you hear that, Holly?
Expenditures. Does she want the expenditures to come down?
Can she hear you better?
Holly, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you good, yes.
Okay.
Can you ask, can you-
So, so go ahead and repeat that and I'll do it for baby.
I, I want to know if she feels that we've, we've got a, a budget as tight as we can get it. The expenditure's part of it if we've got it.
So Mr. Rose is asking if you feel the budget is as tight as we can get it?
Expenditures.
Expenditures part.
With the expenditures part.
For 70 million.
I do, yes.
Okay.
I do, yes.
Kevin?
I feel Austin has done an exceptional job of getting to the point that we are at. I am not sure, as, as Dr. Gallin had mentioned, the next steps were going to be cutting positions as she mentioned in committee just last week. But I think that with some due diligence, I think that the budget that he has put together is, is well done, but I also think that we can probably squeeze by with just a small increase and some more reduction on the fund.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't tweak the expenditures part? So I think right at the moment, we've got Ron and Ed that would, that would like to chew around the edges of the budget as far as the expenditure's part of it. So I think we've got, correct? Am I, am I, or you're, you're on with that? So, okay, so we need to get to the, to the, so we're not, I, I think we're not going to rewrite Austin's budget. I think what we're going to do is figure out how much of a tax increase and how much is going to come out of the fund balance. I think that's where we're at, Austin.
Now-
The, the 70 million is-
I-
Go ahead, Kevin.
Now, I mean, I, I mean, I agree with what you just said, but you can always, always work on the budget even after we get through tonight, that if there's some things and concerns in there that people have, that we tell Austin, can we look at this or can we look at that and cut back just a little bit so the money is just not, and I'm not saying people just won't spend it, but we, we kind of curtail some of spending even after we pass a budget tonight. Just because the money is there doesn't necessarily mean-
And you know what, you guys? I, I don't think that we have that problem. I, I think we had Austin come back here last year and tell us how we, how we performed under what we'd budgeted, if I recall correctly.
4 million.
4 mil, how much?
4 million.
We spent 4 million less than was budgeted?
Yes.
Yeah.
But tight-
I mean, it can, it can be done.
Right, but the, so let's say that we're, I guess what I'd like to get to this point and what I'm trying to get to to move this forward is, is that the expense is part of it and, yeah, you can, you can work on the budget, but no, you can't work on it forever. You got till Friday. So if we leave the budget alone and we can just talk right here, right now about where the money's going to come from to fund it, is what I would like to get to if, if I think we've got a majority that would like to do that.
I agree with that.
Okay. Now, does that mean we can vote again on the exact same budget and then move on to the taxes?
You have the document to review. You'll have to, somebody will have to do a motion to reconsider.
It has to be somebody who voted no on the budget has to make the motion to reconsider.
So that would have to be Ron, Tammy, Ron, Ed or Holly or-
Okay, this, so, yeah, I understand what I'm saying. So we were saying the 70 million would be okay.
But we're going to work on how we're going to fund it next.
The next one would be how we fund it.
Yes.
Okay. So I would take a motion that we reconsider the adoption of the budget.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Ed? I'm going to say that-
We're already on-
On the budget.
Just the budget.
Just the budget.
As the expenditures were presented, not the tax increase.
The taxes are always voted separately.
Correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so the first thing we need to vote on though is the motion to reconsider.
Ah, okay, so this is just a motion to reconsider the original budget. I'm going to hope that there are no discussion. I don't want to dissuade anybody, but I do. All in favor of reconsidering the original budget, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? We are reconsidering it. Now, can I get a motion to pass the original budget? And can, does it have to be from a no vote or not? Anybody can?
I think anyone can.
I think anyone can at this point. If we want to be really safe, we can have somebody who voted no make the motion and anybody can second.
I'll second.
Monica moves.
I'll second it.
Second from Tammy. Again, if there's any discussion, but to be clear what we're doing, we are going to pass the budget of roughly 70 million. We still have to talk about how we're going to fund it. That's, that's not, this is just the expenditures. Any comments, discussion? All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? So now we come to the tax increase part. Ask for motion and I'm, I'm going, I'm going to resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following real estate tax levies for fiscal year 2024-25, 11.98 mills with a home debt exclusion of 29,341, and I would need a motion. Monica moves to pass the, the original tax increase.
Yeah, I'll second, just, I sort of easily could.
Monica moved, Ryan second. Again, we've already had quite a bit of discussion about this, but I will open it up for discussion on this again before we vote. This would be for the original proposed tax increase. Discussion?
I mean, it feels like there's a sense that there's willingness for like a friendly amendment to maybe change that millage rate.
Well, I, I think we kind of got to vote it down first, right? At this point, it's been moved and seconded.
But we could amend the motion.
I think we have to vote it down and then we can re-
It would be a little cleaner to vote it down and then somebody make a new motion. I mean, you can amend the motion, but-
So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
You only get one vote. Okay, so, did you do your math homework?
Yes, a 1 million in a high-yield taking account at roughly 5% over one year and that says anywhere from 51,000 to 55,000 per 1 million dollars.
So every million that we take out of the fund balance-
That is over the course of 12 months.
Loses us 50,000 a year.
Yes. That is uncompounded.
You all have to do your own math. Austin's my math guy.
We're talking four, right? Four million.
Well, it was zero.
Right, right now, the way you had, the way you had the budget, you were taking how much fun, from the fund balance to, to balance it?
A little over 3, I don't know, 3.1.
Austin's my math guy.
We're talking four, right? Four million.
Well, it was zero.
Right, right now, the, the way you had, the way you had the budget, you were taking how much fun from the fund balance to, to balance it?
A little over three, no, three point one. I have to look back at my spreadsheets.
And we would need eight hundred and ninety-five to do a zero, another eight hun, another almost a million to do zero tax increase. So, it would bump it to just over four million probably out of the fund balance. So, basically, fifty thousand and more in lost interest if we, if we do that. And we're already foregoing a hundred and fifty-ish.
I think, I think, are we talking, I don't know where we are.
Yeah, you...
We have to make a new motion.
I'll, I'll recognize Dr. Peckering.
Hey. I forgot what I was going to say, which is a terrible time to do that.
I'll, I'll, I'll say this, um, a millage in, in even revenue for the district, that millage would be, I want everyone to write this down, please, if you've got a pencil. Eleven point five six, that is the magic zero number, zero increase.
Instead of eleven point nine eight, which is on, on here.
Correct.
That's zero percent, okay.
So, I was just going to say, it still feels like kicking it down the can to me, right? It still feels like next year, the year after, we're, we're still going to be in this inflation place. And, uh, you know, we have been talking, I haven't been on the board very long, but we have been talking about making incremental increases so we don't have these issues. And we're just, it's just going to happen.
And we just don't listen to them.
Well, sure, you know, we don't vote the same, Jeff, but...
I, I, this...
All right, I don't listen.
A question, just because I don't know the answer to it. Like, the homestead exclusion saying twenty-nine thousand three forty-one, is that set by something other than us or...
That's, that's a calculation, um, I have to pull my spreadsheet.
But I mean, does that have to be that high or is it a percentage?
So, the way, you have to understand the way homestead works. So, like, there are people out there where their tax bill is less than that three hundred and fifty-five dollars, okay? So, the state gives us an allocation, gives us one number. This year was two point two oh seven million, I believe. They give us that number and they say, okay, you can re, you can, uh, release however many people apply for homestead, however many got approved, the same amount of dollars, and they, they say, go out. Well, you would think you would just take that two, two point two oh seven million and divide it by how many parcels you have. Well, you can't do that. You have to say, well, this person's tax bill was only a hundred and seventy. So, what do you do with that extra money that they're not receiving? You add it back to the pot. You keep doing that and you keep doing that until you get to a number where everybody on the right side has been fully relinquished of their, their tax. And then everyone to the left has a portion of their tax. Is covered by the Act One Homestead. So, that twenty-nine thousand, it's, it's an equation. I don't have my...
No, that's fine. No, your explanation is fine. Like I said, I didn't know where that number came from. So, it's basically a checks and balance that we're not winning or losing on that dollar amount. It's a reimbursement that has been refunded to the people that have...
The taxpayers, yes, yes. That is one, so an increase in homestead allocation, so last year our homestead allocation was like one point eight six million. This year it went up to two point two million. That does not affect, I'll say, my bottom end. That does not affect my bottom end whatsoever. That is purely tax savings for the taxpayer.
Thank you. That's, I definitely need that.
It's complicated, and you know, these are, a lot of times, we want, we want a one-number answer. We want a, a yes or a no. We are talking about tax equations that take me, I make a living being a business manager, and it takes me weeks to figure these things out, you know?
Well, and then also the tax law is so vast that nobody could ever understand it in their lifetime.
Well, if it takes them weeks, maybe I need a new math guy.
Johnny on the spot. So, the eleven point five six gets us an even millage, um, an even...
And we need, we need eight hundred and ninety-five thousand out of the fund balance to budget.
An additional eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, yeah.
And you're already taking three point...
Three point something.
And so, I would, I would just advocate for some tax increase for your sakes later because you're going to have to be having the same conversation next year, the same conversation next year if you are at zero forever. And I know we're talking about, maybe we're now talking about cuts. I don't think we were talking about that this past year, but, um, that's still going to take a long time to get those savings from those cuts. So, you're still going to be having the same conversation next year about whether we're going to raise the taxes. So, I think for your own sakes, um, maybe our own sakes, um, I would go with maybe what Kevin said about a two, a point two five increase. That would be maybe where we could agree.
I was, I was just looking at, I was just looking at the numbers that Jeff said. It's eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is what we're proposing in the budget for additional spending, that if we cut it to my half, it's four hundred and forty-two thousand, oh, yeah, four hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And my rough would be a point two three five, um, millage increase, which would be more to what we were looking at in May. And, um, not that I even wanted to do a tax increase, but under the predicament that we're in, um, when Austin's mentioning about the, the amount of money we're going to lose on the investment, we take four hundred and some thousand, we're going to be down about what, twenty-five, not quite twenty-five thousand on investment for half a million dollars, four hundred and some thousand. And I would propose then, to get things moving along, a point two three five millage increase, which is less than where we're at now, half, less than half of where the proposed was at the beginning, and it puts us at, um, four hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred coming from our fund balance.
I, I agree with your assessment there, Kevin.
Sorry, is that unofficial, like, that wasn't...
It's not a...
That's just a save, somebody wants to make a motion.
But, yeah, if I don't see anybody... Ryan?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, I actually, I don't know that number.
Go on, I got, I got it. I'll do this.
Well, maybe.
Eleven, seven, nine, five.
What was, what, what was the motion?
It hasn't been made yet.
Ryan? How about we go with eleven point eight? Because your two three five mill increase makes it eleven, seven, nine and a half. Do you do halves?
Um, we are already, uh, yes, 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 we can.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion just to make...
I've got it already, I've got it already written here, so I'll just put the number in. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following real estate tax levies for fiscal year 2024-25, eleven point seven nine five mills.
Second.
Actually, I need a motion, so...
So, move.
Who was the second?
Monica.
Say the number again.
Eleven. The motion is that the Board of School Directors approves the following real estate tax levies for fiscal year 24-25, eleven point seven nine five mills.
And Ryan has made the motion and Monica has seconded it.
Good.
I believe that's, that's, if I did, I didn't have my math guy do it, but you said eleven point five six was zero percent increase and Kevin said a two point, a point two three five. If I did my math right, that's eleven, seven, nine, five. We're good. I should add, you do that.
That's what I did, too.
All right.
But we both wrote right.
Checked it three times, right, yep, yeah. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We lost her.
Polly? Polly, are you there?
Aye.
I think that was everybody opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Next, the homestead and farmstead exclusion. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the implementation of Act One Homestead and Farmstead exclusion for fiscal year 2024-25 in the amount of two million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. And further resolved that the district has calculated a homestead and farmstead exclusion for the purpose of reducing school district property taxes, such exclusion to be approximately three fifty-five ninety-one. And before I ask for a motion, did any of those numbers change because of what we did?
Uh, let me look at the... Which one are you looking at?
The homestead. Farmstead exclusion. Is that, does that stay the same? Because you're still dividing the, dividing the same pot over the same parcels, right?
I'd still move.
Well, let me get some numbers.
Second.
Can we discuss it a little bit while...
Yeah, go ahead and discuss it.
Well, I mean, I could just say friendly amendment, but if it changes...
If it changes, we just accept the change. Better ask Rachel about that.
Uh, I think we need to vote what was on the agenda. Oh, no, no, that's not what passed.
Eleven point seven nine.
So, we've got a motion and second on the original numbers in here, but we're just going to check and see what the new numbers are.
Make sure that they don't change with our millage.
And to confirm, I have Ron is making the motion and Ron is second.
Ryan, second. It does. It changes it?
Yes.
So...
Should we both know on this one then?
I think we have to, we need to strike down.
Need to vote this down?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and vote no on this and then...
Give me a more, give me, yeah, give me a...
He wants us to wait a second.
No, no, you guys, you guys can vote.
Vote it down? Okay.
Catch numbers for a new motion.
The only discussion we're going to have here is for everybody on the phone to know that you need to vote no for this because the numbers changed with the millage change. So, all in favor, nobody say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, nay. Motion is defeated.
Nay.
First one, two point two million stays the same. That's what the state's giving us.
Right, so three fifty-five ninety-four, three fifty-five is going to change.
It says approximately.
Can we just make a motion that we accept like the new calculation without an actual number in there?
No, I think we need to be specific.
Okay, that's fine.
And it says approximately...
It does say approximately in the motion, though.
I think it's because of a rounding issue. It's, there's decimals and points.
Can we move on to the next one, come back?
Move on to the next one, come back.
Okay, okay. Is that Lisa?
There she is.
We're going to move on to the next one. Yeah. And we're back. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves to enact a one percent earned income tax and a one percent real estate transfer tax for the fiscal year 2024-25 in conformity with Act Five-Eleven, and I would need a motion. Ron, second, please.
Second.
Ed? All in, or, excuse me, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Polly?
Wait for it to come.
Yeah, I guess I should have watched it last, sorry. But we have time, it's going to pass anyway, so...
Polly, can you hear me? She agrees?
Yes.
We'll say that motion carries. I won't wait for you before I do another one. I have your numbers.
I, I think we do need to wait for Holly to vote because we need the...
Or Tammy.
Tammy.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, Holly, but we do need to wait for Tammy to come back because that's one that there's supposed to be a...
On the five-eleven one?
On the, yeah.
Yes.
We need to say yes when we get certain numbers.
Five-eleven.
Yes.
And now, Austin has a number for our...
So, it would read... Three hundred and fifty-six dollars and two cents. We added, um, up for a hundred and four people with the last calculation had full relief of their taxes. With this calculation, a hundred and eighteen people do.
So, going back, resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the implementation of Act One Homestead and Farmstead exclusion for fiscal year 24-25 in the amount of two point, two million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. And further resolved that the district has calculated and recalculated a homestead and farmstead exclusion for the purpose of reducing school district property taxes, such exclusion to be approximately three hundred and fifty-six dollars and two cents, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Ron?
Second.
Ryan? Is there any discussion? All in favor, favor, please say aye.
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 Polly?
Yes, she's in favor.
Motion carries. Did the five...
One second.
We need to go back because the, the, now the number has changed on the resolution on the millage because that included a homestead exclusion amount.
I didn't read that whenever I read the motion.
I guess then the question is, does it have to be in there?
It's just in parentheses.
I mean, from, from my vantage point, legally, it doesn't have to be in there because we covered it legally elsewhere. I don't know if you need it.
That's how we've always done it. Here.
Oh, that's almost the best reading.
Well, no, no, I hate that answer, but that's how, exactly how the motion looks, so that's how I do it. Okay. I'm trying to remember to other school districts.
Okay, so are we all in agreement that only what was read out loud is what was voted on, on the resolution regarding the millage? Are you good with that?
Me?
No? All right, then we're good.
So...
Grammar rules the day.
Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves for the business manager to make general fund budget transfers for the purpose of closing out various funds for the district for fiscal year 2023-24, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Ed, thank you, second?
I'll second.
Tammy, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Holly? She texted yes to make the transfers. She's having a hard time hearing Jeff.
Motion carries. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the district's insurance coverage for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year as quoted by First National Insurance and the DJB Group, attachment eight, and I need a motion. Monica, a second?
Second.
On? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L budgetary transfers, and I would need a motion.
Second.
Monica and Ryan, seconds, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Personnel. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the reappointment of Tim, Timothy M. Senate and the Knox Law Firm as solicitor for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The agreement is attachment ten, and I would need a motion.
I still move.
Tammy, thank you. Second?
Second.
Ryan? Is there any discussion?
I think I laid out everything last month, but the last month's meeting is, to my concerns with Knox Law, I would also add to that, that we had our information gathering session on policy changes. They was given a directive to take and give us some draft suggestions to review, and we have not seen those yet, so that, I just wanna remind them more of that.
They are working on those.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Holly said yes.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes five to two, or, oh, six to two. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the first and second reading of the student's success coordinator job description, attachment eleven, and I would need a motion. So moved. Ed? Second?
I'll second.
Tammy, thank you. Is there any discussion? If, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Acknowledgement that under the terms of Section eleven oh eight of the school code, the superintendent has notified the secretary of the board that the following persons have received satisfactory ratings for their sixth semester of employment and have thereby gained the status of professional employee, and will be tendered a professional employee contract beginning with the first semester of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jason Kreitz, Kathleen Dreyer, Luisa Ferrere, Arica Letaboo, Jacob McCoy, and Matthew Wilson. And congratulations to all those folks. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, M, and N. And I would need a motion, please.
I still move.
Tammy, thank you.
Monica, second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the resignation of Jan A. Filippa from the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District effective June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Any motion, please?
I still move.
Tammy, thank you.
Second.
Monica with second? Is there any discussion?
I just wanna say Jan was, when I came on and, and was a great leader, and was really kind in, in that transition. I think it's unfortunate that she won't be able to serve on, on the board any longer, but this is a thankless position, I think, and a payless position, I'd like to say. Again and again, we don't get paid for this, and she, she put up with a lot over her time. So I just wanna thank her for, for all that she did, and her patience that she had.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, if you, if you accept her resignation as of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, there needs to be a special meeting called before July eighteenth to appoint, for this board to appoint a new member.
What have we done?
If you don't, then people petition to the Court of Common Pleas and the Court of Common Pleas judge. Takes their sweet time in...
Lot of fun.
Nope, been through that, since then.
I do, I do have a question about that, because I couldn't make the meeting, so is that just gonna keep, is it gonna be then, still?
Yes, yes.
Is it?
The timeline, we've already set, we will have a special board meeting, which we will need to advertise, that will be July eighteenth, and that will be at six, or, I'm sorry, that will be at noon.
I do wanna say that if Jan's watching tonight, or whatever, that I appreciated the time that I spent serving with her here, the whole time I was on, I think she's, her term maybe started two years, she started the two years before mine, just welcomed me onto the board, and was, was really good to work with. We had our disagreements, but that, nothing had to get out of hand. It was always professional, and I appreciated that, and as well as with everybody else on here so far, I, you know, we're gonna disagree on things we have tonight, and that's, you know, it's the way it should be. And I think she did a good job of that, so I, I really appreciated the time I spent with her, and still have a lot of respect for her. That being said, we do have to vote on this, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, sadly. Administration comments, Dr. Galvin.
On a positive note, I would like to congratulate the Meadville Boys Volleyball Team for their extraordinary win at States. That, that says a lot for our district, and we are extremely proud and happy for them. Also, would like to commend Mrs. Filippa for the dedication and years of service that she has had on our school board. She has spent a lot of hours and time dedicating on various committees, as well as our board meetings and so forth, so thank you to Jan. Lastly, just to remind people that might be moving or still need to enroll for kindergarten, to please do that as soon as possible, so we can continue to balance our class sizes, especially at the elementary level, and getting kids registered for high school schedules.
Other public comments or board comments?
I wanna say thank you, you handled the whole budget thing very well. I, I like the way you broke it down and everything, so, and Austin, thank you for all your time. I'm not trying to discount what you do. I do not, I do not want your job by any stretch of the imagination. I love what numbers can do for you, but I do not want us to read numbers all day long, so I really do appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else, public? Okay. Resolve that there be no further business, this meeting is adjourned at seven ten P.M. Ron, move.
Second.
Ryan, second? I don't know if you have to vote, do you? We don't think you need to vote on that, do we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As you walk out the door, all in favor.